Good job, counselor. We're gonna bring the committee to order. Madam Clerk.
The first certificate presentation for this evening is a motion presented by Council Vice President Visconti that the City Council award certificates of commendation to the 2021 Revere Youth Baseball Minor League Champions, the Reds.
Congratulations, guys.
Keep going, keep going.
Come on down. We'll put that right up on top. How's that? All right. We're gonna start off by giving out Anthony.
Adenizio.
Adenizio, how's that? Yes, Maggi, there you are, all right. Marco Sparidi. Rocco. Riker. Okay. That's okay. Teresa. Joseph Biocella. Michael Biocella. Matthew DeSisto. Ryan DeSisto. Michael Coffey. Coach Anna Maria. Coach Anthony. And this is Coach PJ. And I'm gonna say a few words, if I may. This championship win is kind of bittersweet for me because I was the coach of this team a few years back, one of the coaches a few years back with Anna Maria and Anthony. And back then, I think we might have won one game. And maybe it was because of me as one of the coaches, but it's great. Yeah, thank you, Council President. But it's bitter sweet to see how they come around, you know, from winning one game and all of a sudden they're up here showcasing a championship trophy. So I want to congratulate all of you on a great season, a great victory, a great championship series. I heard it was great. They did a great job. So the other thing I want to congratulate is the coaches, all three of them, along with all the rest of the coaches in the league. They're up here because of the time and effort you guys put in. And parents have a tendency to forget sometimes that these people, all the coaches in the league donate their time. They don't get paid. They do it because of the kids up here and all the kids in the league. Without them, they wouldn't have a league. So I commend all of you and all of those who donate their time for these kids because this is what it's all about. So I will read the certificate. This is on behalf of the City of Revere, certificate of commendation and acknowledgement of leading the Reds to a 2021 Minor League Baseball Championship by instilling teamwork, discipline, and sportsmanship in your players. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Assistant Coach PJ Flahy. This certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council on the city of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens this 27th day of September in the year of our Lord 2021 and of the Independence of the United States of America, 224th. Thank you. Congratulations. Want to take a picture? Can we grab a picture?
No, I'm a short one here.
All right, come on over here.
Yeah, they can take that.
You can take your mask off. Go ahead. Take your mask off. Congratulations. Would you give this to?
I think that trophy is bigger than he is.
Yeah, I know. Yep. All right.
The next presentation, this is a motion presented by Council Vice President Visconti that the City Council award certificates of commendation to the 2021 Revere Youth Baseball Major League Champions, the Phillies.
Congratulations. Put that right here. How's that? Congratulations, guys. Come all the way down. How's that? All right. Ryan Raduazo. Jaden. Ryan Shea. Ryan Bodridge. Nico Els. Thomas Waldron. Jamie O'Neal. Nicholas Young. Cameron Nguyen. John Leoni. No. Yeah, hold on. Hold on. Matthew Leoni. Justin Ladano. There you go. Give me one of those. And the coaches, head coach John Leoni. Brian Waldron. And Randy Raduazo. Congratulations. Okay. Now, on this, I was at these, this series, and this series was a tough one. And the reason being is my son was on the losing team. So it was, it was really, it had to be the best series that I have seen down here in quite some time. And it was a pretty exciting game. The, they lost the first game and then came back and won the next two. But what was the most exciting part of that was the third and final game ended up going 11 innings. Okay? And it went back and forth. And when you thought they were out, they just come right back. And when you thought the other team was out, they come right back. It was, it was just a great, great game. So while I'm sorry that my son's team lost, I'm happy that you guys won because there had to be a winner. But you guys just showed great discipline and great sportsmanship by everybody on both sides, and that's what it's all about. And I want to thank the coaches on both teams that night because it was great umpiring and it was, they left it all on the field and it was just a great game to be at. So I want to wish you guys the best. It was a great game to be at and I'm proud of you guys for pulling it off. So congratulations. This certificate, let me read, let me read the certificate for the kids. An acknowledgement of your extraordinary athletic achievement accomplished through the perseverance, teamwork, and discipline as a member of the Phillies by winning the 2021 Major League Baseball Championship. Special recognition is hereby granted to the Phillies. This certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens this 27th day of September in this year of our Lord 2021 and of the Independence of the United States of America, 2021. Thank you. Congratulations.
Take the mask down. Just take him down. Take the picture. Just for the picture. One more.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job, guys. Good job.
Next certificate, presentat- Next certificate presentation is a motion presented by Council President Zambudo that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Bianca Fiori in recognition of her ranking first in her freshman class at Revere High School.
It appears that our recipient has not arrived. Well, if she comes later, we'll get her.
Next certificate presentation is a motion presented by Councilor McKenna that the City Council award a certificate of appreciation to Carol Smith, owner and teacher of Revere's Happy Day Nursery School in recognition of providing a learning foundation to young students for 40 years.
So we're also honored to have both our state representatives, Jessica Janino, who happens to double as a counselor at large.
Hello.
And Jeff Turco.
It's an honor and a privilege for me to do this for Carol Smith. I've known Carol since she was five. Her sister and I would have to walk her to school every single day because she would cry her eyes out. She didn't want to go. For months and months and months, we had, we'd take her and she was crying. The teachers would come in the room and say to Christine, can you console your sister? She's crying and crying and crying. Months. 13 years later, what does she do? She goes to school to Salem State and she becomes a teacher. How ironic is that? Now, after 40 years, how many kids has she consoled when they were crying when they came to her school? So it just, a lot. So it's just come for a circle, full circle, sorry. So, oh, I gotta take my glasses off. So Carol has been a teacher and an owner of Happy Day Nursery School since 1982. She has taught thousands of students and now she's teaching their kids. Let's hear it for Carol. Not only has she taught for 40 years, but she has, she runs the communion program at St. Mary's Church, and she ran Our Lady of Lourdes religious program for years when they were active. During COVID, she sent out many videos reading books to children. She has volunteered for so many events in Revere, I can't even count. I can't even tell you how many, honest. Carol is definitely an unsung hero, selfless, truly one of the best people I know, Revere has, and she's one of my best friends. This certificate of appreciation is a well-deserving acknowledgement for her outstanding service to the children of the City of Revere. Thank you. Now, I had to put my glasses on. Okay. City of Revere, Massachusetts, certification of appreciation in acknowledgement of providing superior early education opportunities by helping fostering, foster intellectual, emotional, social, and physical development in young children for 40 years in the City of Revere. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Carol Smith, Happy Day Nursery School established in 1982. This certificate of appreciation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, the 27th day of September in the year of our Lord 2021 and in the Independence of the United States of America, the 245th, signed by Ashley Milnick and President, Council President Tony Zambudo, and the motion is offered by Councilor Joanna McKenna. So we're not done yet. So here from the State House is Rep. Janino and Rep. Turco, Jessica Janino, which who's, who does double duty, and Rep. Jeff Turco. They're gonna present Carol with an award, a certificate.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, Carol. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jeff.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Carol Smith, owner and director of Happy Day Nursery School in recognition of your 40 years of dedicated work bringing out the best in children by skillfully and compassionately, encouraging your students to grow intellectually, emotionally, socially, and physically at school and at home. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope that future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this 27th day of September 2021 at the State House, Boston, by Speaker of the House Ronald Mariano, offered by Representative Jessica Janino and Representative Jeffrey Rosario Turco. Congratulations.
So I'm gonna call Carol up here to say a few words.
Okay, I just want to clarify one thing with St. Mary's. I don't run the first communion program. I'm just a teacher. I don't want to take that away from Donna. She does a great job. Thank you all very, very much. I'm very, very overwhelmed, as you can tell. I've always had a passion for working with kids since I was a little girl. I graduated from college in 1981 and desperately wanted to be a teacher, but the state had just passed Proposition Two and a Half and there were no teaching jobs available. So I got together with another friend of mine, Diane Michie, and we opened Happy Day Nursery School together in 1982. We had no idea what we were doing. We took out a small business loan. We both worked two jobs. We both stayed living at home. We only had five students our first year, and mostly they were family friends from the neighborhood that my mother probably made them come there. But each year, Happy Day grew a little bit more and we developed a good reputation. At 20 years in, my partner Diane decided to leave, and that left me with a very difficult decision. Do I close Happy Day or do I go on by myself? It was very scary as I had two young children at home and that was a lot for one person to do. So I prayed a lot about it and decided to give it a try, and here I am 40 years later. Park Ave is the fourth location for Happy Day, and I own the building now, finally. Through the years, I did have a couple of opportunities to go work for the Revere Public Schools where I would have made more money and had a better retirement, but I couldn't do it because Happy Day was my heart and soul. The biggest compliment that I get now is when one of my former students calls and says, Ms. Carol, are you still there? Because I want to send my son to your school. It's been a journey with lots of challenges. I wouldn't change a thing. I'd like to thank all of my Happy Day families throughout the years that have come through the doors and entrusted me with their children, especially last year through COVID. That was so awful and I had so many colleagues that had to close their programs because they had no enrollment. I'm so grateful to my parents for that. I want to thank the amazing staff that I have now and that I've had over the years. Ms. Denise and Ms. Maria are here, Ms. Lenore is here, Ms. Karen is here, Ms. Teresa is here, and Ms. Paula is here. Thank you all so much, so much. I want to thank my family, Larry, Danielle, and Nicholas, who have many, many nights cut this out, copy this, paste this, do this. So appreciative. The rest of my family that's here tonight. I want to thank all of you for being here and always encouraging me never to give up because it was really difficult sometimes. I really wish that my parents could be here today because they were my biggest cheerleaders. And I remember going to my mom and dad at 22 and saying, "I can't get a teaching job, so I'm going to open a preschool." And they were like, "Oh, okay, you know, whatever." I'd like to thank all of you for being- all my students that are here, my current students, thank you all. I love each and every one of you so much. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, guys. I want to thank Councilor McKenna, the entire City Council. I had Jerry Visconti's four kids at Happy Day. I'd like to thank Kim Hampton. I want to thank Kim Hampton so much from the mayor's office for this special recognition, Kim. I really just wanted to march in the Columbus Day Parade with my Happy Day kids, but she told me there was no parade this year, so we couldn't do it. But thank you all, all of you, very, very much. It means so much to me, and I really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Next certificate presentation is a motion presented by Councilor Janino that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Massachusetts State Trooper Carlo Mastromate for leading the investigation into the abandonment of a dog on Revere Beach and quickly bringing an animal abuser to justice.
Thank you for being here, Trooper. I've had the pleasure of knowing Carlo for most of my adult life, and it's because of his dedication to the city of Revere. If there's a call for an animal, Carlo is there. If there's a situation down the beach, it's Carlo that's answering the call. And we are so lucky to have him based out of our Revere barracks. Not only is he based in the city of Revere, but he's a lifelong resident of the city of Revere. He grew up here. His family lives here. He lives here. So, you know, he serves our community with that dedication. But when I heard about this situation, it was special. And, you know, police officers respond to difficult situations. So when he was driving down the beach and saw this dog in distress, he looked at it and tried to figure it out, but then he went above and beyond to make sure the situation was taken care of and that the person was really held accountable. And that takes a lot. It takes a lot when you have a million other things going on and different calls you're responding to and the day-to-day duties of your job and your life to really take a case like that and take it to heart. I know there were a lot of people involved in this process. You know, Ocean Dukenel was phenomenal in the process and housed the dog and took care of the dog. And the trooper even made sure that there were people that were recognizing them to make sure that they got the donations and support that they needed for the services that they provide to the state police and to the city. So I am grateful for you. The city of Revere is grateful for you. And I'll read a citation on behalf of the city. Rep. Turco has one from us both behalf of the Commonwealth. So, this is one of those cases that I'm really excited that I wear two hats because it's the best part of my job. So, "The city of Revere, Massachusetts, certificate of commendation in acknowledgement of your beholden rescue of an abandoned dog at Short Beach in Revere that was left to drown in appreciation of your thoughtful and diligent investigation to bring the animal abuser responsible for this heinous act to justice, special recognition is hereby accorded to Trooper Carlo Mastromate, State Police." The certificate is presented on behalf of the City Council of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 27th day of December in the year of Our Lord 2021 and in the Independence of the United States of America, the 245th. It's signed by Councilor- Council President Anthony Zambudo, City Clerk Ashley Melnick, and offered by myself, Councilor Janino. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. And I'm going to read the citation, but just, I want to thank you personally. We've known each other for years. We have some of the best, most highly-trained professional police officers in the entire country. And you are representative of the best and the brightest that we have that protect us every night when we go to bed. And we know that we're safe because you're out there. And now we know our animals are safe too because of the great work that you do. And I just, on behalf of my kids who are so excited I was going to see you tonight for what you did. Who's that brave trooper that saved the dog daddy? I just want to thank you very much for what you do. So, without further ado, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Massachusetts State Trooper Carlo Mastromate in recognition of leading the investigation into the abandonment of a dog on Revere Beach and quickly bringing an animal abuser to justice. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 27th day of September 2021 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, offered by State Representative Jessica A. Janino and State Representative Jeffrey Rosario Turco. Thank you very much.
The next certificate presentation is a motion by Councilors McKenna and Guanasso that a certificate of commendation be awarded to Fiori's Market in recognition of their retirement after 43 years in business, providing the highest-quality hand-cut meats and groceries to generations of Revere residents.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, we're going to get Pal on the phone. Pal's the other half of Ellen, Fiori's Market. He's in rehab. He's in rehab now. He was struggling with COVID. So, we're going to get- So, we have Pal on the phone. I just want to say that I'm going to miss Fiori's. It was one of my favorite places. I've known Pal and Ellen for 30 years. Their daughter was my student in the fifth grade at the Parry Bear School. I taught aunt, and she went on to be an aunt teacher. So, from that, they kind of gave me a little more, you know, whatever, specialness. So, Pal would go in the back of the room, and he would get me the fresh meat. And so I got taken care of. But I'm going to miss the half-bill pork chops.
Me too.
Oh, my God.
I'm going to have to find a place to buy them.
And I'm going to miss seeing you and Pal every single day. So, thank you for the services, 43 years of service. And, you know, they didn't want to leave, but they had to leave because of illness. So, thank you so much, Pal. Thank you. I love you, Pal. Thank you for the great meat. It's been a privilege to serve the city, our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Pal, it certainly- we certainly miss you. I've serviced the Y3 area for 34 years. Every one of those years, you were in business there, and you have been a great friend, you and your great wife. Don't worry about Pal. Be healthy. I've got it under control. We're fine. We certainly will miss the both of you for your spirit of friendship and love that you've shown and dedication to our community and the wonderful service you provided for those folks down Revere Street and around the city, as testimony offered by my council friend. And so, we wish you nothing but the best in retirement. I certainly think this is the year to retire because all good people are retiring. And I think that the mindset is there, you know? And so, Pal, get better. Foxwoods is waiting for the both of us. We will go, and we will have fun, and we will make money. We love you. I'm going to read this certificate of appreciation as follows. "The city of Revere, Massachusetts, certificate of appreciation in acknowledgement of your retirement after 43 years in business, providing generations of Revere residents with exceptional customer service, friendly neighborhood convenience, and the course of the highest-quality cuts of meat, especially their pork chops and homemade sausages. Special recognition is hereby afforded to Pal and Ellen Beatrice Fiori's Market, established 1978. This certificate of appreciation is presented by the City Council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 27th day of September in the year of Our Lord 2021 and the Independence of the United States of America, the 245th. Signed by our clerk, City Clerk Ashley E. Melnick, also signed by our Council President, Anthony T. Zambudo. And this motion was offered by Councilors McKenna and Guanasso. Well deserved.
And I'm going to introduce the state reps.
Thank you, Councilor McKenna. So, Rep. Turco and I are trading off tonight and taking turns, but this one's really special to me and my family as I know it is to Rep. Turco and his family. Ellen, you and Pal have provided such a service to this community for so many years. You've been a staple in my family and a part of our daily lives for my entire life. And I really want to thank you for what you guys did through the pandemic. You were able to provide such an important service to a lot of local families that were afraid to go into stores, that were afraid to go out, but they knew they could shop with you. They knew they could be there safely, and they knew that they could get what they needed for their families. I know it was a part of my dad's daily routine, coming in and seeing you guys. But thank you for everything that you do. Pal, I'm sorry you can't be here today. We wish you the best. My grandmother and my dad send their love. But from all of us, from the Janino family, from the Turco family, from us in this capacity, thank you for what you provided for the city. And we are sad to see you go.
I know. Me too.
So, on behalf of myself and Representative Turco, be it hereby known that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Fiori's Market in recognition of their retirement after 43 years in business, providing the highest-quality hand-cut meats and groceries to generations of Revere residents. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses hope for good future fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 27th day of September at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, by Speaker of the House Ronald Mariano, offered by Representative Jeffrey Turco and myself, Jessica Janino. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next certificate presentation is a motion presented by Councilor Rotundo that the Revere City Council recognized Doug Goodwin and Nick Maglioni for their hard work during the COVID-19 surge and thereafter to ensure students and families had access to food and school materials whether they lived in Revere or not due to displacement.
Next, Doug.
I got the state one, so you give him the city one. Okay. But thank you. He's going to get sick of me by the end of the night.
Doug?
Thank you.
So, what people don't understand is that during COVID, we have children that don't live in Revere. We have children that were unable to get food, were unable to get computers, a host of- Take the mask off, Tony. Okay. A host of other things. And what they did day and night during this entire time was make sure that our children were provided for, make sure that their families were provided for. And so, they did this on their own time. I believe they should have been paid for it, but again, they did this all on their own time, hundreds of hours. And for all of our children that are displaced in, I hate to say it, shelters, or for that matter, in hotels, it's hot enough as it is. But then to have COVID and then not have the right equipment, not to have a computer, not to have food, they delivered it. They made sure that they got it. And I'd like to give them the certificate of recommendation- excuse me, commendation, and I'm going to read it as follows. "In acknowledgement of your community service during the COVID-19 pandemic to ensure that all students and families throughout the city of Revere had access to food and school materials, special recognition is hereby given to Nick Maglioni. This certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizen, this 27th day of September in the year of Our Lord 20- excuse me, 2021 and of the Independence of the United States of America, 254." Again, this is also for Douglas, who was also a former City Councilor as well. And "In acknowledgement of your community service during the COVID-19 pandemic to ensure that students and families throughout the city of Revere had access to food and school materials, special recognition is hereby accorded to Douglas Goodwin. This certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizen, the 27th day of September in the year of Our Lord- I'm having a hard time with this 2000 thing today. 2021, the Independence of the United States of America, 244." And State Representative Janino and State Representative Turco have commendation as well.
Thank you, counselor. So, this is a very special citation. For those of you that don't know, aside from being a valued employee of the city of Revere, Nick's also my big cousin. And in my life, Nick has always been someone that I've looked up to as someone who's always taken a lot of time, don't make me cry, always put others first, and to dedicate himself to the community. And this is Nick's job. Nick went to work every day to help people. He chose this line of work to work with the kids in our school systems, a school system that he went through to give back. So after he worked 40 hours a week and did his job, he chose to go above and beyond to help people during the pandemic, during some of the most difficult days of people's lives. He was going into the homes of these children and making sure they had what they needed to get through the day. So, Nick, you make me so proud every day as my cousin, and I'm so proud of you and your role in the city.
Thank you.
So, on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, myself and Representative Turco, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offer its sincerest congratulations to Nicholas Maglioni in recognition of your hard work during the COVID-19 surge and thereafter to ensure that students and families had access to food and school- students. And when I talk about highly mobile students, we have roughly about 140 kids that are homeless right now in the city of Revere, and about 50 or 60 of them live outside the city. That's not counting our other 50 kids that are in DCF custody. So if you ever think about it, you ever have a friend that you want, you want to really think about how well that we have it, sometimes other people don't have it as well as we do, give DCF a call and find out how you become a foster parent, because they are in need of foster parents right now. Thank you, Mr. Turco. Thank you, Mr. Janino. George, thank you, as always. Nick, it's a pleasure.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So that concludes our meeting of the committee as a whole. Thank you all for attending.